Good evening. I'm calling to order the regular meeting of the Carabelle City Commission. It's Thursday, November 7th, 2019, at 6:00 PM. And we're at the Carabelle City Hall. I would like to ask Commissioner Allen to please say the prayer and then we'll send the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag so hope you'd all stand.
Our God in Parliament, we're so grateful that we have the opportunity to live in this beautiful little town. We ask you that we have the blessing of your wisdom as we might do the things that would be most appropriate for all the citizens involved. Be with us tonight in our judgment. We might do what is proper and favorable with your side and hope it be best for our life as a city. I ask that in your Son's name.
Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. I always ask for you, everyone, to please speak into the microphone when they come to the podium and the commission as well. And please turn off your phones, turn them down. Do we have, we do have, I know amendments to the agenda, so staff wants to advise us on that.
We need to amend the agenda to add Resolution 15-2019 and remove item five.
Okay. Item five underneath.
Underneath.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Now we'll look for the consent agenda and that is for the October 3rd, 2019 minutes and the October 21st, 2019 special minutes, the special meeting minutes, the attorney's invoices for September.
Mayor, can I have a motion to amend the agenda?
Okay. All right. I didn't know we needed that, but we'll.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Do we have a motion? Okay.
Make a motion to amend amendments.
Okay. And we have that motion back from Commissioner Melander, second back from Commissioner Walden. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and then that motion carries. Okay, so the consent agenda, and I've already read through that. Do we, has everyone had an opportunity to review the minutes and the attorney's invoices?
Motion to approve consent agenda.
All right. Thank you. We have that motion. Okay. Second back from Commissioner Mathis. So we have that motion back from Commissioner Melander, second back from Commissioner Mathis. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and that motion carries as well. All right, this is the time for public comment. If anyone has something to say or any comments about something that is not on the agenda, this is the time to speak now because we won't have an opportunity to speak about anything other than what's on the agendas we move forward. Yes, sir. Mr. Christie, just come up and tell us your name.
I am Mr. Christie, representing the Carabelle Chamber of Commerce tonight. A couple of things I wanted to discuss was, or at least inform the city commissioners, that this month will be our Small Business Saturday for the business community. And you know, that's the Saturday after Thanksgiving. They have like Black Friday for all the big stores to do their thing. And then on Saturday, we have Small Business Saturday. And we have over 20 businesses that are going to be participating all around town and also on the outskirts of town this time. And if you're familiar with the format, it is going to be that we have like a passport too that you carry around, kind of like we do with the culture crawl. And you go to the stores and you visit a certain number of them and then you're eligible to draw for prizes. And everybody has donated some kind of a gift certificate or prizes to be given away. We've had tremendous success in the last couple of years. Sherri Wesson is usually taking the point and helping with the Carabelle Chamber on this project. It has just turned into such a great business experience for us and business owners downtown. So we just want to let you know that that's coming up. And maybe make aware the chief that we might need an extra person or two to kind of keep an eye on what's going on with the traffic because it's not going to be like the streets are blocked off or anything, but we have experienced a lot of foot traffic in the downtown area during this day. So just to be aware that that will probably happen. And then also to make you aware, here's the official poster for the holiday on the harbor, Boat Parade of Lights again this year will be this time on December 14th. And I'm not able to speak to a whole bunch of how many vendors we have. I know that we've got at least 20, 24 I think I was told today that have already signed up. Of course, the last, that's for the street vendors that will be on hand. But we will also have a number of people registered to vote, I mean, in the boat parade. And I don't have a count to give you share with you on that, but at the last minute, both of those tend to go up significantly. And I just wondered to give thanks in advance for all of the help that the city does each year with blocking off the roads and having William get with the prisoners and help us set up the tents and break all that stuff down and also have the extra support of the police department to keep traffic in control.
Very good. If you would just, for that, for the streets and roads assistance, if you'd just coordinate that through the city administrator in advance.
She's very, very helpful.
And we're looking forward to that, to fireworks. Thank you for your information.
Yes, I mentioned that. Thank you for the fireworks.
All right. Is there any other public comment?
I'd like to comment on this one. The people driving through town on those holidays seem to go right through over to St. George Island. But when we have these little events like this, people say, well, I didn't know you had a city out there. They didn't know there was a street back here and one over there. So we find people are always surprised when they come through to see the town is bigger than it looks.
And that's true. The ladies, the dinner divas, I believe, that give out the children's books, the first Christmas that they did that, they're from St. George Island. They said they had no idea we had that Marin Street and just thought it was lovely. So, all right. Is there any other public comment? Okay, then we'll move on to the commissioners' reports. Commissioner Allen?
Just a couple of things. I want to express our thanks for all the people that volunteered to help look for the lady that was lost last week down in Land Ark. We had several of our law officers involved in that. And of course, the search team, which I remember, we did some work on that too, and actually searched through the woods. I didn't, but I was the radio man. But they searched through the woods 50 feet apart and couldn't find anything in the fact that she was somewhere else. That's why they didn't find her. We're thankful that she did survive and is being nursed back to health. One other thing, we did find some money for a possibility use and some increase in some wages of our administrative force. And since it's not on the agenda though, but just we can probably have it next month if that's possible. We're going to agenda.
Okay. You have an item you'd like to put on the agenda?
Yes.
Okay. Just speak with the staff about it.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Mathis, do you have anything for us?
I have nothing.
Commissioner Walden?
I have nothing.
And Commissioner Melander?
Nothing for you?
Okay.
No, it is there.
All righty. I just would, I have a few things here. I want to let everyone know that our firehouse now has a generator. It was installed this past month or so. Our Water and Sewer Superintendent Charlie Painter organized that and it was a surplus generator from the Water and Sewer Department. But it's all installed and ready to go in the event of an emergency. This past week, the Land Ark Sewer Lift Station at the corner of Highway 98 and Appalachia in East Land Ark has undergone a much-needed total rehab, including pumps, piping, concrete, power pole, can't see impervious driveway is going to be installed, and a, what they call a supervisory control data acquisition system known as SCADA, which is an alarm system if something goes wrong with the lift station. Price tag of $190,000. And this was included in this year's capital projects list, which is being, and also mostly funded by FEMA through Hurricane Michael reimbursement and 22,500 was budgeted for the SCADA system. And I'm going to say I have not yet signed the DEP SRF loan application agreement, but I think I will be shortly. Okay. I just wanted to let you all know you had given the mayor permission to sign that agreement. We'll review that under Russell's report. I have requested some needed roadway maintenance for the portion of Northeast 9th Street off of Highway 98 and Riverview Drive. So Courtney's aware of that and she's aware of the staff. And because some commissioners may receive phone calls on this issue, I want to alert you all that on Tuesday, I requested code enforcement of five public right-of-way locations currently being used as private dump and collection sites. And as a result, on Tuesday afternoon, staff issued 12 code enforcement citation letters to residents or property owners using the public right-of-ways as perpetual collection sites. And I also requested the police department to warn residents who have recently placed various household items in the right-of-way for road crew pickup, to advise these residents about the debris pickup ordinance. And I asked the police department to please stay on top of this. And I would like that the streets and roads crew also report any new drop-off locations to Courtney so she can alert the chief. Private property code enforcement is not being sought at this process, just code enforcement of our public right-of-ways. And my memo to staff on that is available on request. The Dollar General Construction appears to be complete and we now know and have a good idea of what their infrastructure improvements are in relationship to the roadway surrounding that property. And I would like to move forward with management of the drainage from Southeast Avenue A onto Southeast 5th Street with possible surfacing of Southeast 5th Street with impervious material. And last year about this time, Russell provided us with a proposal for engineering services for the draining portion of the project. And we decided to wait to see what the Dollar General was going to do. It's done. Now, last month or so as a precursor to the drainage issues, I requested Russell to coordinate with Dollar General contractors to place a culvert under the Dollar General's 5th Street driveway apron exit before they put asphalt. So a culvert was put under there. Russell did the drawing up real quick. They put the culvert and put more lime rock back down, put their asphalt down, so it's ready for a drainage project by the city, but we won't have to cut asphalt and repair that, so that's a good thing. And you have that on your list to discuss, so we'll discuss that and see if we can move forward on that. Now, because there is a city department appearing to be in need of someone who can offer direction and leadership in specialized field and because the commissioners should have the opportunity for cross-training and education and commissioner department appointments would have been reassigned had the city held elections this year. I am at this time reassigning some commissioner appointments. For the police department, Commissioner Allen is the vice mayor. And as far as I can remember, you've never had the experience of working with the police department. Is that correct?
No. I've been on the good side of them a couple times.
Okay. Well, now you're going to get on the good side. All right.
Thank you very much.
And he should have the opportunity to learn, being vice mayor, to learn more about the internal workings of our law enforcement department. And then for finance, Commissioner Walden serves as our alternate check signer and he's demonstrated sincere interest in the city's finances all along. And he should have the opportunity to learn about the intimate details of our city finances just as the others have. And he needs to have, you know, and I know he wants to, he's interested in it. Where does the money come from? And most importantly, where does the money go? I know it. Fire Department and Cemetery. The two cemeteries are maintained by Streets and Roads Department, but they are in need of upgrades and we set aside funding in this year's budget to do some upgrades there. We don't have actual projects set up yet, but we do want to do some upgrades and those will need oversight. The Fire Department is an all-volunteer department, partially funded by the Carabelle General Fund. And this group of much appreciated volunteers need a leader who understands the important process of fire protection, which means so much to our community's health, safety, and welfare. And Commissioner Melander, we know, will be able to provide that leadership and direction for this volunteer group. Streets and Roads, this is a small department with a small budget. Recently, the commission has addressed a couple of important issues which will once again be reviewed during this meeting and will be worked out and solved in the near future as well. Our city administrator is overseeing the day-to-day management of this department and she's training and working with the new superintendent. So as such, Commissioner Mathis will remain appointed to this department. Water and Sewer, big department, big responsibility, no urgent problems there. It's under good supervision. We get regular reports to the administrator and the mayor. They have excellent teamwork as far as I can see. They, we have our ongoing monthly meetings and more if needed. We have ongoing budget follow-up. I've devoted countless hours with Courtney, the superintendent's Russell, and other engineers to help bring the Water and Sewer Department to the level it is at today. And I will continue my appointment by the late Mayor Messer to the Water and Sewer Department in 2011. And as mayor, I will also continue meeting with all the other department supervisors as needed and as I have done while holding the mayoral office. I want to remind all of the commission that per the city charter, a commission member may not manage, supervise, or direct city employees directly requesting concerns. Should be requested and handled through the city administrator for our charter. Ms. Keisha regarding check signing assignments. We won't need to change the bank card because Commissioner Walden is on that now, so he will be signing checks on a regular basis as finance commissioner. Myself regular as mayor. Commissioner Melander will be the alternate signer and Ms. Courtney will be the second alternate signer. And so that's all I have to report and we will move to the city attorney's report.
I have a couple of items just to update the commission on. The first is we are still on for the Tote Heat versus City Carabelle trial December 12th. I will, I anticipate as far as city involvement, we have Canovia, we will have a records custodian, either Courtney and Keisha from the city. It's anticipated that opposing counsel could call the mayor to testify. They will have to issue a subpoena over the next 30 days or so for that purpose. And then Willie, as far as that would be the Volta Rose, he may have some relative testimony. But I will get with everyone, get everybody prepared by late November, early December for that trial. It will take place in Leon County, so it's a one-day bench trial. So it'll take place in Leon County front of Judge Dotson. Where will this be? I'm sorry? Where? Leon County at the courthouse, sir. Right on 301 South. 301 South. The, in the other page, Granton, they opened up an estate. We filed our claim, I'm sorry to back up. They had not opened an estate in the months after the pass. I filed what's called a caveat court, which basically puts anybody on notice that when an estate is open, they provide notice to us. And then we submit a claim, which I did. Then they objected to the claim, which is standard. And when someone objects to a claim, you have to file what's called an adversary complaint, which I did the day they objected, on October 9th. And I filed that complaint the same day, which is very much similar to the complaint we already filed in crime county, but now it's in Bay County County Court. And the attorney for the estate accepted service of the complaint. So that, I'll keep you updated, but it will move slowly, but it's where we need to be as far as to keep that claim viable for the city. We can expect, I went and talked to the attorney, they said they were hiring a local law firm, not probate firm, but a litigation firm to handle it. So we'll basically kind of wrap on there. Through some of the same process we've already been through. There is one other thing that's been on my to-do list is revisions for flood ordinance. I hope to have those two because meeting in December for first reading. If the trial stuff consumes everything, then it'll be first reading in January. My understanding is, I haven't had any feedback from the state or anything as far as any problems. We have perfectly valid flood ordinance in place now. It's supposed to be some of their revisions they wanted, which we need to get in place. And then last but not least, we have been working on paperwork and seeking basically consultant to reinstate the healthcare reimbursement program that we had a version of before. At the last meeting, canceled and there's an involvement period beginning here in November through mid-December. And we've talked with a lawyer that was sent to us by our accountant and he's quoted a price of $850 to help us prepare the paperwork that we would need to, to basically reinstate a health reimbursement program, the healthcare insurance reimbursement program. And it would be helpful because we do only have this little short, we have this short period of time to make sure that is something that the commission wants us to move forward on. Again, it's $850, paperwork, Courtney ran it and given the lion's share of it. There's just a lot of details on, on type of, again, bureaucratic part of it, that the healthcare programs really have in place and reprogrammed and we have to reverse employees and commissioners through that. So that's something that if we could get some traction from the commission on.
Would you like a vote? And how would you like that to be worded?
Worded simply that, may, I don't have anybody.
G R U.
We're just calling Mr. Lord Grootson.
Yeah.
But that we would proceed, we would basically engage Mr. Grootson for $850 to assist us with preparations in the middle of the paperwork on the healthcare reimbursement.
Okay. That's fine. Do we have a motion for that?
I have a motion to approve.
Okay. And do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? All right. And it appears to be okay with me. I followed it along and I have had some more communication with Ms. Krick at the county and she sent us a lot of information to look at this past month, which Courtney's been included on those emails. And everything seems in line so far and I don't have a problem with it. So we have Mathis and Walden and.
Walden, Allen.
Excuse me. Allen. Commissioner Allen.
We get mixed up a lot.
I know y'all do. Any other discussion? All right. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, and then that motion carries.
That's it for my report.
Okay. Thank you, Corey. All right. Ms. Courtney?
All right. I would like to just report that for the legislative budget requests, we did submit an application, Russell completed the application and submitted it before the deadline. It was for Carabelle's required SRF loan match for $112,000, you know, the $300 for planning and design of the lighthouse water installation. I know that the county's administrator did report that it wasn't submitted with the county package, but Russell did call and verify that it has been submitted and that it is under consideration through the city and the House. So that is a done deal. In your package, you may have seen a letter from Sheriff Smith, who's requesting a letter of support for his rehabilitation that he wants to do at a work camp in Aquaticola. If everybody's okay with that, we can send that letter of support.
I'm fine with it.
I'm good.
Okay.
HR firms, we sent out RFPs to four companies for HR firms. We got responses back from two. We sent them out again and still haven't got any responses. So at this time, we only have two responses from HR firms. And that being the Chrisner Group and Evergreen Solution.
Well, I would like to suggest that this item, this as an item on the December agenda, so that would be two items we're requesting now, to have discussion and possible action regarding contracting with an HR firm. Is that all right? Is that?
Wouldn't we want to send it back to the HR committee and let them give us a recommendation?
I'll leave that up to the, I know that Mr..
We have time to do that prior to our next meeting.
Magnyn has given us some port sign, but I mean, whatever, it's the pleasure of the I think we can go ahead and put it on the agenda.
Well, I wasn't suggesting that we don't. I was just recommending, and I'll make the motion, that we send it back to the HR committee and let them meet and give us a recommendation at our next meeting, in which it will be on the agenda for us to discuss, but we'll also have input from the HR. That's my motion.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Melander to send, I thought it was to have the HR committee make a recommendation regarding the HR firm that the city should hire. And we have a second by Commissioner Walden. Is there any discussion? I just have a little bit of concern because now we're asking staff to police themselves. And since we have only two to choose from, it, you know, it's going to make it, you know, the HR firm is going to send back and so we pretty much have to choose what staff has picked for themselves. But if that's what this commission wants to do, then that's what this commission will do. So was there any other discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
We don't have to take their recommendations. We just want their input.
Okay. All right.
That's what I thought.
Yeah. I mean, that's.
Committee was for.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay. Okay. And I oppose as well. So we have three in favor and.
I'm in favor.
Okay. So I guess we're, we have Commissioner Allen, Commissioner Mathis, and Mayor La Paz opposed. And we have Commissioner Melander and Commissioner Walden in favor. So that, that motion fails. All right. So we want to go ahead and put it on the agenda so we can maybe get moving the first of the year on this item.
And that's all I have to my report.
Okay. Does anyone have questions for Ms. Courtney? All right. Ms. Keisha?
We had our workshop for ordinance 199 and in the workshop, y'all requested to have a special meeting on the 21st after the PNC meeting. So that was. So that would be at 3:00 or as soon as the PNC got over. I'll receive a motion for that.
Yes, we need to, we decided or agreed in principle during our workshop that we would have a meeting on November the 21st for the attendees that were there. So we need to go ahead and make that legal for a special meeting to have a motion. November 21st, 2019, and Ms. Keisha suggests around 3:00 PM directly after the PNC meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. So that motion is by Commissioner Allen, second by Commissioner Mathis. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and then that motion carries. All right.
And I just wanted to report from the last meeting, the code enforcement letter that was requested 30 days. They picked it up on November the 5th when I took it to the post office. They said they only checked their mailbox once a month. So it was picked up on the 5th, so that'll start their 30 days.
And that was for Mr. Harris, right?
That requested it.
Okay, all right. And I did see that the survey has been done at Alex.
And which I was able to get really good pictures using those stakes.
Okay, very good. All right then, is there any, are there questions for Ms. Keisha?
Okay. Mr. Large Inobia. And that may be the microphone that's having issues.
Don't touch it.
Don't get electrified.
All right, so on our DOT Small Communities Rugway Project, known as The Hill, survey's underway. They have the underground utilities to pick up still, and they're working on that this week, and that's the last they have to survey. For that reason, we decided to move the public meeting to January of 2020, given the holidays coming up. But the construction completion date remains the same. All right, on our Water Management District Grant Project for the Lighthouse Estates, subject to Superface 1 and 2. At the last meeting, the board voted for the mayor to sign that grant agreement. That's a 100% grant agreement. However, DEP has not issued their grant agreement to the Water Management District yet. And we've had quite a bit of back and forth over the last month with DEP in answering questions. I think we're close to the end on that, so I would expect that agreement would be in place by next month. All right, on the Lighthouse Estates Water Extinction Grant for Phase 1 and 2, this is the DEP SRF grant slash loan. It's a 50% grant, 50% loan. This is for the planning and design portion. The, we have completed the application. We've provided it to the accountant, the city's accountant, for their review. They agree with the information provided. We sent that to the city attorney, and he has reviewed it. He has some documents that he has to produce, one of which is a resolution which will hear later tonight. The fiscal impact of that grant loan program is $12,500 annually for 10 years. And the city has revenue available from their water sewer fund to afford that debt service. So to remain on the state's funding list, this application needs to be submitted before December 12th. Okay, moving on, on the raw water filter, we are initiating permitting for the new filters. That's a permanent improvement at the water plant. On the brine disposal, I've reached out to the DEP reviewer by emailing my phone. I continue to try and get his comments back. So we're waiting for their response on that. On the St. Joe feasibility study, we're just beginning that study right now, following the scope of services. And then lastly, the drainage improvements, which the mayor spoke of, we're staying ready to begin that one. And we understand that might include stabilization of Avenue A as well. Based on some preliminary design that we've looked at for that, I think there will be a maintenance prescription required to remove some sediment from sediment traps, and we'll include that in as part of our proposal.
Someone put asphalt there on like a half a block.
I noticed that.
And we don't know who did that.
I thought it was the city.
The city, the streets and roads, they're not aware, and no one is aware who did that. So it must have been Dollar General, maybe, to make it easier to get in and out of the backside, possibly. But the, your scope of work from last year was $9,500 for your task order to do the scope, prepare the scope of work. And this is, we all know, this is the way we have to start out with a major project like this. We have to give the engineers plans and exactly how we're going to do it. That includes full topographic survey of that area. It's an eyesore. It's dangerous with all that sand. We're flooding, it's flooding down onto the buildings there on the west side of Southeast Fifth. So I would recommend that we move forward with this scope of work. It's the only way we're going to know what has to be done and get a good estimate of what it's going to cost. There's funding in the log account, which may be able to fund it. We don't know yet. So I would suggest we move forward with that and have a motion to direct Russell to begin that.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Mathis for, to accept the proposal for engineering services for drainage improvements at Avenue A South. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And then that motion carries. Is there anything else?
No, ma'am.
Okay. And I did mention, and you asked the DEP folks, we're applying to legislative, for legislative budget requests to pay our match of the 112 that you talked there. And the DEP will allow us to pay our match upfront if we get dollars from somewhere.
Yes, I did confirm.
All right, very good, thank you.
Also, on the DOT Small Communities Outreach, I think this was a question that Brenda and I had talked about, but are those going to include the driveway apron, is this maybe in the past?
Yes.
Okay.
Very similar to Kias.
Very good. That's the way I was explaining to one of the residents today that it's going to be like similar to that project, and actually the timeframe is similar as well.
Is that Commissioner Allen with a second?
Yes.
Yes, Mathis and then Allen. All right then, we'll move to our advisory board reports. What partnership, if someone had this camera and microphone, please, thank you.
Good evening, everybody. It's always nice to see you all. We have a brief report tonight. I don't know why this thrills me so, but our environmental team people have been working around the issue of the turtle nests on McKissick Beach. And I just don't, this sort of stuff doesn't exactly make the newspaper, but this is the first time in decades that they have actually found viable turtles on McKissick Beach that actually made it into the water. And that there were several other nests that were flooded out, and they're in there. You could see where they got drowned by the hurricane, but they were, you know, they had broken out of their shells, and they were climbing out, and then they got flooded by the hurricane. But there were live hatchlings that came up at McKissick Beach, so it's a tremendous environmental event for our beach, and so I just think that's, I think that's a really cool thing. There are a lot of folks that have been working on those turtles, trying to make them
Mr. Abberstein has a question about that.
Yes.
Sometimes it doesn't, but as it happens, there's a story by Kate from Snyder on the Outdoor Page, complete story about these nests.
Oh, good. Okay, great.
She did some great
Great, so some people have to And this very paper right here I'm folding up in my hand. Well, I'm actually, I am holding it up to say, I didn't know David was going to be here, but I'm going to say it anyway. Carabelle, the Lighthouse Talk that the Carabelle History Museum is sponsoring this week on Saturday, is actually above the fold on the paper this time, and I, for those of you that, you know, don't keep up with PR, above the fold is very good, David, and we're really grateful for that. And we are having, for those of you that might remember last, every year, the Carabelle History Museum has a series of historical speeches, talks that we've done for quite some time now. This year, we're starting, we're finishing off the Lighthouse Series. Last year, we did our Lighthouse, Carabelle, Friggin River, and the St. Mark's Lighthouse. And then we're, this time on Saturday, starting at 10:00 in the morning till noon, we're having the St. Georgia Island Lighthouse and the Cape Sand Glass. And you know, this Cape Sand Glass Lighthouse is the one they actually laid it down and carried it on trucks to Port St. Joe when the hurricanes kept washing it away. They finally moved it to downtown Port St. Joe. So it's, it's got quite an interesting history, as well as the modern engineering of moving a lighthouse quite a bit down the road. It's an interesting story. So, and the other little good news is that we actually have sponsors this year for our speaking series. So we've gotten Centennial Bank, Sean Donna Home Realty, and Secretors Arena as sponsors this year for our speaker series. So that's a, that's a, that's a good thing, and we really appreciate their support. And just to remind everybody that the Carabelle Cares, the nonprofit part of our activities, is actually the sponsor of Santa during the Holiday on the Harbor event. And this year, we're, we've got, we're going to have the books as we have in the floor, and we will have the photographer come and take the pictures of the kids, and then we'll work it out on Facebook so people can get their pictures of their kids and all those kinds of things, along with the normal candy canes, and as much as we can make it into a full-blown experience for kids locally, we like to do that at the Holiday on the Harbor. So we need something to look forward to. That's really the summary of my report.
Very good, and I'm surprised you left out the piece of shipwreck that washed up.
Well, you know, I actually, I'm surprised I did that, too. Out on McKissick Beach during the last little storm nester, we actually were given a small six-foot-long, two-foot-wide piece of the shipwrecks that had been on Dog Island that we believe are part of the Norwegian ships that were stranded and wrecked in the 1899 hurricane. And as much as we want to pick it up, put it in a truck, and bring it to the museum, we know that's against the law, so we're certainly not doing that. But we are writing to the state and asking them if we could take, if they can find a place in a, if you find an artifact like that that's been soaked in salt water, you have to soak it in a bath of polyethylene glycol 30 or peg 30 for almost a year to get the salt out of it. So we're asking the state if they would soak that piece. It's small enough to actually fit in a tub that they would have room for. If they would then make a museum loan to our museum for the piece. And we already are working on a grant for next year for the exhibit on the shipwrecks of Dog Island. So what would be more wonderful than to have an actual piece of one that was small enough that it's not going to change the course of history if we removed it from the beach? But it would really be important for people to have a chance to look at it and see the, see the shapes and the nails and the pegs, and it's very interesting the way it is. So hopefully, we'll talk the state into letting us, you don't think so?
No, because, and I'm so sorry, I thought you knew that it washed away.
Oh, no!
We hoped that it washed away. It was during the high tides of, on a Saturday, Friday night. Not this past weekend, but the weekend before. Y'all may have remembered that we had some super duper high tides and wave action. I think there was some weather to the west, and it's gone. It's not there. And all the folks that go out there regular, I'm surprised
Nobody told me. I'm depending on my local sources.
And I actually posted it on my Facebook last week or so. So it's gone, unfortunately. And, but the process that Ms. Tamra described for conserving, preserving, that's exactly why they don't preserve the whole ship, the ship itself. The whole is just impossible. But that small piece, the five and a half, six foot, was perfect for preservation.
It was, it was, but, well, you know, nature is really strange. We thought it was gone from over on the island, then it shows up over here, so you never know what the next storm might, it might show up again.
It may be hidden in some marsh grasses somewhere. Well, I'm sorry.
Well, thanks for telling me.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Ms. Tamra.
Thank you.
And I know the Economic Development Council met yesterday. Is there a report on that?
I had invited the chair of board if somebody could. We met yesterday. We had all of our members there, except for one. We're discussing EDC initiatives, things that we can do to bring some economic development to Carabelle. One of the things that we're discussing doing is putting down a brochure that's specific to Carabelle, not just Franklin County, but to Carabelle. We're also looking at doing projects. We've had a long discussion about how to move towards looking at a working waterfront. Lots of components in there for that, so it's just a discussion at this point. That's about all I have to report.
Good report.
Thank you. Mr. Sullivan of the Federal Aviation Advisory Board.
Hey, good evening, everybody. On October 10th, I attended the District 3 Continuing Florida Aviation System Planning Progress, District 3 meeting in Tallahassee Airport. And the topics were finding the difficulty everyone in the state seems to be having, finding contractors for different projects. We talked about airport usage plans for other than aviation operations. In Tallahassee, I know they have a huge solar farm on the unused land up there at the airport, which doesn't interfere with the airport operations, but gives them some use of the land. And also, we talked about the general aviation security assessments. We had ours done in the spring, and everything is fine out there, especially with the gate and the high-resolution cameras we have. The next, they're going to be implementing an airport resiliency assessment. I don't know what that's going to entail. We have some standing water out there now at different locations that I don't believe was out there years ago, so I don't know if that will fill into, if that will be part of the assessment. Yesterday, the city administrator, the mayor, and myself met with Kim Lee-Horn to review the items that are on the report. The two things I want to bring out is we're going to have a meeting with Duke Energy to contract, Kim Lee-Horn and myself, to discuss the repair of the airport pavement area damage during the hurricane staging. And they're going to look over this, they want to know what our expectations are, and what, we want to see what their expectations are. They can work on the scope of the job that they're going to do. But, you know, as we've told them all along, we just want the airport back to where it was the day before the staging, and they've expressed it. They want to make sure everybody's happy, the city's happy with the results. So it should go good. Lastly, the fuel system, you'll have a resolution tonight for, to approve the signing of the Public Transportation Grant Agreement to upgrade the fuel system and replace the fuel pickup motor assembly. This will give the airport a reliable system that utilizes more available fuel. And we should be able to sell a lot more fuel having a reliable system out there that's easily read. We're just really fortunate to get those funds at the last minute from FDOT to finance it. it. Any questions?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Sullivan.
Thanks, Jamie.
All right, then we'll move forward to the Caravelle HR Committee, Human Resources Committee Report by Mr. Tom Magnin.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Just have a brief report. The Human Resource Committee met on October 21st to revise, to work on a job description for the Lieutenant on the Police Department, which is a new position. As kind of our, our template for that, we used the, the old Deputy Chief job description, which, which was written somewhere probably eight to, eight to 12 months ago. Did some revisions of that job description, particularly on the, the management responsibilities for the new position. And I believe you have a copy of that, and we'll hold that over tonight. And other than that, that was pretty much what was discussed at that meeting. We did know that, Courtney did inform us that there had been no other responses to the advertising specification package. So that's what happened at that meeting. Just wanted to add that for that agenda item in December, I do have, I did write reports on our phone conversations with both of the HR firms that replied, being the Prisner Group and Evergreen Solutions. Probably would be useful, it'll take a little bit of time to discuss that. The Prisner Group, besides the original proposal, also sent an additional proposal that the committee requested to look at wage, salary, and benefit issues. And that was a separate proposal. So there's two proposals from the Prisner Group. Evergreen Solutions also submitted an initial approval, proposal, and then after our phone meeting with their representative and further discussions with Courtney, they came back with another proposal. I believe that's correct, isn't it, Courtney? So we had the, for each respondent to that add, there's two proposals, and also, if it's useful and you need them, I still have the, the minutes for the, the meetings that we have with those company representatives. So, and that's about all I have.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Magnin. Does anyone have questions?
No, just thank you, Mr. Tom. Your report was kind of the direction I was going with, with an earlier motion, but that's great, thank you.
And then, Ms. Courtney, if you would secure those reports that Mr. Magnin has on these phone conference calls, and then, so there's two proposals each, and then two meeting minutes, or if there's more meeting minutes, and just make sure we all have that for review. We appreciate it, thank you so much. All right. So now we'll move on. Do we need to take a break, or we want to wait a few minutes?
Just wait a few minutes.
All right, so we'll take a break maybe in about a half an hour. All right, new business. Item one, approved, disapproved, the plat for the Caravelle Beach RBC Phase 3-B. And so, is there someone here from Caravelle RBC? Do you all want to speak and just go ahead and tell us what you're asking for here?
Hello, I'm Ryan Cleveland with Cleveland Engineering. Did the design on the original park and was helping with this plat. Several years ago, we did this Phase 3 and did a PUD as part of the design to have the, we call them the Haven cottages that you see there, and then do the RV lots. And what they're proposing to do now is to take the individual RV lots and turn them each into fee simple lots to have, so what originally would have been, I think it's six lots for the Haven cottages, and then what we would call Lot 7 was a grouping of RV lots, but they want to take each one of those RV lots and turn them into fee simple lots per sale. Nothing is changing on the actual development. We're not building anything new or reconfiguring anything. Basically, just putting pins in the ground to establish light lines for each individual lot. It'd still be, they would still be RVs, so there's not anything somebody could, you know, tear down and build a house on or anything like that. It would be sold as an RV-only lot. Still have all the common areas that would be platted as well for the stormwater system, the streets. I guess there's a common area in the back, there's some wetlands, and I think they have a dumpster right there. Each individual lot has a power and water source that has a meter on it, so they'd each be individually, you know, it'd be, it's just a, be like a, their own little, little lot, so. But that's pretty much all we're proposing, no, no new construction or changes over. It's just, we put pins in the ground and have individual lots.
Okay. This went for the Planning and Zoning Board on the 15th of August, how did that come out?
It was, it was for site plan approval, and it was approved. This one's a little, it's fine, it's just a little different. I talked to Mr. Cleveland about it. Is what we've got here is our process typically, and just kind of fresh memory of the site plan. You move to final site plan, but also you skip right to preliminary plat, and then final plat approval. Preliminary plat approval typically is given, and then a developer can begin construction with this preliminary plat. Builds roads, water sewer, stormwater, everything goes in, and then it comes back before the, the engineers involved the entire time, both approving the, the preliminary plat as far as the plans, making sure it's compliant with all of our plan development regulations. And then, once it's built according to preliminary plat, sometimes there's small changes during the construction phase, and those will be reflected on a final plat, and then the commission would approve the final plat as long as there was no material deviations from the preliminary plat. In this situation, all the infrastructure, I'm told in my conversation, is in, so you've got all roads, stormwater, water, sewer, everything's done. So, becoming before the city for preliminary plat approval, it's, it's really just a function of making sure that there's a document, a plat, that conforms to Chapter 177 of Florida statutes, that has all the signature blocks and all the information that a plat should have on it. And that, again, is a function of really our engineer looks at it, I will look at it too, but it's really the engineers that look at it and say, yeah, we've got everything, this, this plat, you know, applies with the law. And with the city standards, which, again, they've already applied the city standards on the construction, because they've already, they've already, they've already built everything out there. So now they're doing exactly what Mr. Cleveland's saying, is they're basically laying a plat down over a built, essentially subdivision, and doing so, carving it up into fee simple lots. And so really, in order to approve the preliminary plat, though, I've just looked over here at Russell, is, and asked him if he's seen the actual preliminary plat. And...
No, no, that has not been needed.
So that needs to take place, just to make sure that it's compliant with 177, but this one is straightforward. There shouldn't be any issues. I think Russell would identify any that there are.
Sure.
All right. Do you all have any questions that could...
Yeah, are you saying that it's not ready, then, to go ahead and approve it?
Yeah, I would actually, you could approve a contingent upon approval by the engineer or, or table it to the next.
Make a motion to approve a contingent on the engineer's review.
A second.
Okay, we have that motion contingent on the engineer's review to approve by Commissioner Meliter, and second by Commissioner Allen. Discussion? Yes, I just had a couple of questions I'd like to ask. Will park models be allowed?
Like I said, they'll be just like an RV space, so according to Florida statutes, they're allowed to put a park model on it now, and it'd be the same day anytime a safe was allowed.
And then, I guess, and I just want to add to that, the lots five through 12 have, would fall in the VE zone, and so they are required to be moved after 180 days, so they could be permanent, they would have to, five through 12. Five through 12, if you see there, there's that VE, which is the high velocity.
That's correct.
So they would have to have the quick access and they could...
Quick release.
...release. And actually be moved every 180 days.
Okay. And that's in our Florida ordinance, all right. And then, so at this point, the individual property owner, say, they, they have park models in there, they're, they would be responsible for evacuation, mandatory evacuation, is that, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right. All right, and then they'll just have to adhere to setbacks, regular city and Highway 98 FDOT setbacks?
Yes, ma'am, they have, the site itself has the perimeter setbacks.
Right, it's already...
It's already established as part of the original...
It's all right, then. Is there any other discussion, any other questions?
Just doesn't increase the footprint of the property, does it?
No, it's, nothing is changing on the ground at all, it's just changing on paper.
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, and then that motion carries. Okay. Item two, discussion of possible actions concerning the 2019 Community Development Block Grant application. And do you have any, any information you want to talk about regarding that, Ms. Courtney?
I think we've discussed this in a couple of meetings before, that the city had planned for our CDVG grant. The area that we talked about is Marine Street. What we've discussed would be to replace the light fixtures on Marine Street, the boardwalk, the sidewalk, and the light metal railing. Possibility of putting in a, I don't really know what to call it, an entrance gateway overhead sign. I think we've all agreed, in principle, that we need a motion to approve to submit for the block grant.
Okay, and I will say that this would be more of a CRA project as our last CDVG, because it will be...
I imagine we're talking about CRA.
CRA monies. And, and I do want to say, a lot of things I say here, I know here, I already know, and I know that the commissioners already know, but I'm saying it for public information. So, do we, do we want to move forward with this? Okay. We need a motion, then.
Make a motion to move forward.
All right, we have a motion to move forward with submitting the application to the DEO for the 2019 Community Development Block Grant by Commissioner Mathis. Do we have second?
Oh, second.
Okay, and we have that second by Commissioner Allen. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Any opposed? And then that motion carries. All right, and item three is, is related as well. Discussion of possible action regarding appointment of Citizens Advisory Task Force.
As a part of the CDVG, CDVG grant, you're required to have a meeting of a community action task force. It's, it's five people, three of which are low to moderate income, and then two, it doesn't matter. Two people of city staff can sit on the board if we appoint them, but no more than two. We do have some suggestions, I've reached out to a couple of people, the mayor had some suggestions, I had a few. So we've reached out to a few people, I can name those if you'll like, that we use our staff member Shelby Bailey, Sabrina Brown, who has the old pharmacy building, Michael Pace has the bicycle shop right near Marine Street, Skip Frank, and Greg Christopherson. So if that, everybody's happy with that, we can just make a motion to appoint them. It's just one meeting they come to, they come to one meeting, the staff gives a presentation, they vote whether to approve our presentation or not.
And I think Mr. Fox is suggesting that meeting be on the same day as our next December meeting?
I've told everyone that it be noted February 21st or December 5th, whichever I can arrange for everyone to get together.
Okay. Do we have a, we have to have this task force, we cannot move forward. So Courtney has reached out to all of these people, and do we have a motion to appoint the five members named by Ms. Courtney to the Citizens Advisory Task Force?
Make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have that motion by Commissioner Mathis. Do we have a second?
Oh, second.
Okay, second by Commissioner Allen. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Any opposed? Okay, and then that motion carries. And I just want to alert the commissioners that, to expect the December meeting to be long, longer, because we're going to have the project recommendations presented to us. And then, we're going to also have the first public hearing for the general input, we're going to have a public hearing for general input. So the task force will provide input, and then we're going to have a hearing where the public can provide input on proposed projects for the CDVG grant. And then we're also, as required by the DEO to have this grant opportunity, we'll have to have a fair housing workshop, and that will, Mr. Fred will be here at Fox, and he will be conducting that as well for us on December the 5th. So we'll have those three items that will add to our, our agenda move on. Yes, ma'am?
Will the meeting of the Citizens Advisory Task Force be open to the public, or is that...
Yes, it would be.
It would be, okay.
But we don't know what day that's going to be.
Right.
Okay. All right. So, are we ready to move forward on this one, item four, or do we want to take a break? I'm just checking. Keep rolling, all right. Item four, discussion of possible action concerning redesign of parking spaces along the first two most northern blocks of Marine Street. Now, I will say that we've had this on the agenda before, I think it was, were you with us when that happened?
Oh, yes, oh, yes.
It was, it was...
Yeah, it's been...
Okay. But now, I remember, you, you were with us with the, with Avenue B.
Yes.
I think, CRA, and so we, and that was, and we had parallel, and then we had to go to diagonal, and beautiful asphalt, and we had to paint black all over it and start over. So, we never changed the parking places on, on Marine Street, but we have had that as a discussion before, and so Mr. Russell has some paperwork, plans, or some information that he researched for us on Marine Street back in the long time past. I know it was over four years ago. So where, do we want to start with this discussion?
Can we do it? Maybe?
Let's hear it, buddy, Dennis.
Yeah, I look back at what, at the last time we had looked at this in earnest, and it was 2014.
Okay.
Well, generally, we did some field measurements, and the stall lengths for the angle parking are currently about four feet too short from the standard four feet. This is significant. So in order to bring the angled parking space dimension to the standard length, what we'd have to do is shift the center line towards the east, and then remove the parallel spaces in the landscape islands on the east side of the road. So it, it would place traffic directly up against the sidewalk on the east side, so the northbound traffic would be jammed up against the sidewalk. So that, that's an option without widening. I think we could widen to, to make that condition better. Obviously, expense with that. Another option we looked at was converting those angle spaces to parallel spaces, so you'd have parallel spaces on both sides of the street. That would be a reduction of 17 spaces, roughly. Seventeen to 18 spaces. But that, I'm sorry.
Okay, so a reduction of 17 to 18 spaces. What, is that, is that in this, this area here, is it two blocks, or how many, how much space?
Yes, actually, a little bit south... Yes, actually, a little bit south of Avenue C, I have, I have an exhibit, I mean, if it pleases board, I can pull it up.
Okay, that would be fine.
Would this be a good time for a break while we connect it?
So he's going on down south, a little bit past Avenue C.
Well, it's one way through there, isn't it? Yes.
We're going to take a little break while Mr. Russell sits down, okay, just going to take a little recess. Okay, we're going to reconvene here now, reconvening, our meeting, November the 7th, 2019, Carabelle City Hall, okay, Mr. Russell, take your way.
So this is just a summary, the spaces are four feet short, there was a glare, okay, for the standards, angle parking stall widths and lengths, I should say, on the west side, we have to shift the center line or remove, I'm sorry, shift the center line and remove the parallel parking and the landscape islands on the east side, all right, one option we considered was to convert all spaces to parallel parking, we would not have to shift the center line, really open up the travel lane, but we would end up losing about 17 spaces, so other considerations we thought about were a remote parking lot to make up for those lost spaces, a crazy idea would be a one-way street there, which I think it was one-way, at one, at some point in history, is that not true?
Not that I remember.
Okay. Yes, sir?
Sorry, just a dumb question, no matter how you orient parking spaces, they're all parallel, so when you say parallel, are you talking about 45 degrees or, or nose to tail?
Nose to tail.
Nose to tail, thank you.
That's what I mean by parallel, parallel with roads, all right, this is just an exhibit showing, showing the, the angle spaces with the correct length and the center line shifted over, and you can see, maybe you can see, the, the landscape islands on this eastern side of the roadway would have to be removed to accommodate the northbound travel. We did have an idea for a remote parking lot, I knew you.
Only half of that.
All right, only half.
What?
Only half, but, but that's on Avenue C recently resurfaced, so the concept of parallel spaces on both sides, you see, these are existing parallel here on this side, so we'd keep that on both sides of the roadway, so it looks, looks something like that, and I think that would really dress up the corridor, and I think the, the whole point of the CDVG grant would be to encourage commercial growth here in the corridor, so that's just an idea that we had to help, to help make progress.
Okay, and help stimulate our conversation now, and give some ideas to, to think, and actually, I will remind everyone that it's a, a commercial revitalization grant, so that's what we, we want to do, something that's going to help bring people, attract people to that area, the removing of the planters of the landscape areas, that's a major issue, because our, our resurfacing there is barely, I don't think it's four year, it's hardly four years old, I hate that, I mean, a brand-new resurfacing, and if we start cutting that up, we're going to have to, you know, that's going to be, I'm just saying, an expensive item to have to resurface.
I would agree, I think the parallel spots would, would be, we would not have to widen the road.
That, that's my view, I mean, let me share my view, and I'll be glad to, out of the options of what's been brought forth, and what I had thought about, just from my point of view, that's, to me, that's the only logical and reasonable and rational and accommodating option, is the parallel parking on both sides, front and rear, I, I definitely, my vote would be against moving lanes over onto a sidewalk for sure, and then clearing out the, the planters and the money that's been spent there to unify the area.
And the lights.
Yes.
Would the lights be affected as well?
I'm not 100% sure, with the parallel.
But it would be the most economic route.
Yes.
To go to, to the parallel.
And just, when this balled up, we were only discussing in front of Harry's Bar, no more of Marine Street than that.
Okay, and that was, I misunderstood that.
Yeah, because we don't want to get into spending, we've already repaved that road, paint some lines ain't that big a deal as it is repairing.
Right.
But that's the reason we want the public here to voice their opinion.
Sure, so, so how, how far back, would it be this block?
You know where the boardwalks is?
Yeah.
I'd say where that little Marine place is down through the boardwalk, which is Avenue C, where we put them new parking spots in.
Most of the problem is caused by the big, long trucks, that's a big problem, I don't know if you can come up with a small parking lot for small cars and motorcycles only, or something like that, that's the only others.
Well, we talked about writing compact park vehicles only, compact cars only in those spaces, we figured that would, it would, it would just be a waste of time.
I wouldn't like that.
They park on the.
Or just five by, you're going to put it in there.
I, I do want to call the attention to everyone that back on 2014 or so, we, we, or 15, we resurfaced Southeast Avenue B, and Mr. Russell had designed parallel along here, and we had parallel painted, oh, so beautiful, and it was a big commotion in the CRA meetings, and we ended up having to paint black over the, over the parallel spaces, and then go back and paint diagonal spaces in there, but we have a lot of diagonal spaces there that are not, that's not fully utilized, we have, you know, a, a good amount of parking on Southeast Avenue B that is absolutely not utilized to its capacity, and then, of course, Southeast Avenue C, around here on the, on the side, we put, I believe it's 13 spaces there, I guess about three years ago, and those spaces are not utilized at all, only when I go up there and park or something, but, no, so we do have parking that would, at this moment, that would make up for some of the, you know, the lost spaces, actually, on the other side, we put three spaces on the other side, so we've got about 16 spaces at the corner of, of Marine Street and Southeast Avenue C, now, Mr. Christie has voiced during the break that folks come to Christie's Cottage and pull up there and load and unload, so would they, they would still be able to load and unload the parallel, I would think.
Are we talking about from Christie's Cottage, making a change?
I don't know, I don't know, you know.
The only thing I've heard about is from Harry's Bar, which is like Kisha was just saying, from Avenue C to Avenue B.
Nothing else.
And how would that?
There is, there is kind of choke point right there, you're right.
It is, yeah.
That's correct.
How would that look?
I, I think that would work, I think it would, I mean, we, we need to put a pencil to it, I think that would work.
You know, for aesthetics, though, when you're out on the street, you're driving on the street.
I think it would look fine.
Okay.
I did.
And the folks, there's quite a few parallel parking along there, and like I said, plenty of parking around each corner, for the eve, the folks that come in the evening to, to Harry's Bar, there's plenty of parking on Southeast Avenue B, and plenty of parking on Southeast Avenue C, yes?
When you were talking about eliminating 17 spots, now, what length were you talking about, were you talking about from Avenue B to what?
I was talking about this, this segment here.
Yeah, all the way down to where the angle parking stops before you get to the condo, so that's that entire stretch.
Right, so, so if we did convert it less than that, it would be, would be less.
And that would be from Southeast Avenue B all the way to the end of the angle parking going south.
That's right.
And like you said, it is, that's a choke point.
Well, now, the end of the angle parking going south, that's a little bit past the boardwalk that you're requesting.
This thing's up for discussion.
Yeah, I was just asking you a question.
I have no problem.
What he was concerned about.
What they're supposed to do, if we do, anybody.
Now, I, I just want to make sure I understand, I understood, I, I thought the 17 to 18 blocks included from Highway 98 all the way, all the way down south there.
Well, we really weren't proposing to change here.
Okay.
Well, you have parallel parking on the west side there in front of Christie's Cottage and the old pharmacy.
Yes, and I, I just understood that was less than.
Okay, and we have, there is parallel parking in front of Harry's and the bicycle shop right now on that side.
That's correct.
Yeah, on the east side.
Comments from the public? Yes, or Mr. Frank?
Thank you, I'm Skip Frank, you might think I don't have a dog in this particular fight because I'm two blocks away, but that's not true, this is Carabelle, this is our business district, and as things go there, things go for the whole town, okay, think about that area that we're, that we're looking at right now, the pharmacy's closed, then Watkins' business, various businesses are essentially closed, the real estate office, the open lot, and the barber shop, I don't know what is going to go on with, with the Marine Shop, the owner, what the owner's going to do, you know, with that, Cam Gordon Johnson, the Cam Gordon Johnson slash theater slash now canoe kayak place, I understand he's going to close that, I, I saw that someplace, but be that as it may, it's not a fully functional building either, and the white kitchen is not open yet because of the beer and wine problem that Louis was so good to point out last month, if two or three of these four or five places I just named, all of a sudden crank up and start running, 17 or 18 spaces missing, it's going to be a disaster, you know, I, I just suggest that somebody approach the Watkins family, talk about that empty lot across the street as a parking lot, you know, unfortunately on the water, but I don't know, you know, where else we're going to find space, thank you.
Thank you, and a parking lot there would be nice, because it would keep the water view open, but I'm telling you, I, I would not be able to afford it, I mean, there's just not enough money in the world, and at one time, we, we were trying to buy something somewhere around here from, from that group, and they insisted that we buy the whole thing, you either buy everything they had for like four million, or you can't get anything, so.
Well, just, just on, just to give you a perspective here, this, the, the number of spaces shown right here is 100, so if we didn't have that, maybe.
Well, we, we are working slowly but clearly behind the scenes, we're trying to develop that crudely to have some overflow block grant parking right now, yes, yes, or Mr. Park?
I should know this, but I'm, of course, pointing at Russell, I need to know, but I should know better, is we retained some property around the more house.
The ones on the corner? Yes, we did.
Is that this corner?
Right.
Now, I know there's all kinds of topography issues, but that corner is not bad.
That's true, but now, we did, we did a project here to improve this area.
Parking there now.
It's already full parking. We didn't retain that too long.
Not full, but.
No, it's, it's used during events.
But the heel couldn't move.
Good trucks and vendors use up here.
But we did put.
I just really want to see the memorial park.
We did put. Well, not all.
Paid for it.
No, we have a good idea for the building now, we did put, believe it or not, Brenda's coming around, like about 16 spaces there, these apartments at the corner of C.
I remember those.
We only done, the length of the boardwalk, we wouldn't lose those 17 parking lots.
Right. Shooting from the hip, maybe.
Four or five.
Maybe five, yeah.
That wouldn't be a, I don't have a problem leaving, leaving the rest, the only problem I've seen is it's right in front of the bar, the rest of it's fine.
So it would be adjacent to this, are we still calling this an alley?
I guess.
I was talking about the length of the boardwalk.
But the boardwalk is kind of, I mean, you may as well just start it right here and let it go, because the, these people that park here at this, at the Senora Building, Tom Trump Ice House, they're sticking out as well, and the boardwalk is there.
The gentleman bought the old Tom Trump house because he wanted to talk to me about changing this.
Oh, really?
Yes, I stopped down there one day when he was doing the work on the roof, and he wanted to suggest it, we take this up, I'm only talking about the length to the boardwalk, the old Tom Trump fish house to the end of the boardwalk, which we have a problem car pulling up on the boardwalk all the time.
I, I believe that the new owners of the business of Christie Cottage is, Cottage are here, the new owner, is that correct? Do you have an input or anything?
I have some questions.
Okay, and, and I'm Brenda, nice to see you, we haven't met yet.
I'm Randy Lee.
Hi, Mr. Lee.
I have just a couple of questions, are we talking about the loss of spaces, are you including ones in front of Christie's Cottage?
Yeah.
So, because there's seven spots there, and I looked and measured, we would lose all of them but two if we went parallel, so we're not looking at doing anything with that.
That's correct.
And then the landscaping that's on the corner of Avenue B and Marine Street, is that city landscaping, or is that privately?
That's city.
Because that does create a bond spot there with the ponds, which could help, we could do something with that, other than that, I'm happy to talk to you.
Well, thank you.
I'm happy, you're terrible, thank you.
Maybe we should look to see if we get the palms trimmed up a little bit by Mr. Myler.
You know, the CRA just put those palm trees in, just, it was part of the, the CRA, it's funded, those palm trees were funded as the improvement to the facade of that building, so the city just did that.
Are they, are they, I need to go back and look, can they be trimmed up?
I don't, I don't know.
Kind of the style, like a bush palm or something?
I think they're just, oh, they're just palm, whatever the popular palm tree was, it would be a four.
Okay, I think, okay, well, how do we want to move forward on this, I mean, it's quite a decision here.
Well, I'm, I'm hearing parallel, and understand that the length needs to be confined to that area, would it please board if we came back with the concept plan showing that?
That's.
And we'll study the impact of it.
Yes.
Okay, now, exactly where, let's just get this narrowed down, make sure we understand, gentlemen?
All right.
Okay, where?
My suggestion is from Avenue B to Avenue C, Southeast Avenue B to Southeast Avenue C.
West side on.
Like right here?
Yes, I take care of all of that bottleneck right there in front of the areas.
Right, because Harry's got, Harry's. Right. Because Harriet's got her well in from his place to start.
Like this, Mr.?
That's it.
I can't see nothing.
I, I think that's a good guess. And let him, and give me the time that I'm not, that way he can come in and voice opinion before we approve.
So if I might say from my mic right here to right here.
Mayor, I had a comment. I've noticed that where Mr., I'm not sure I've got his name right. Cursey, that owns the motel. Is that his name? Curse? It's not Cursey.
Carney.
I'm sorry. I didn't get it right. So where Mr. Carney has gotten a permit to make a marina with eight slips out of what we call, have called the dockmasters dock there, the ones on this picture, south of Tom Crumb's dock, yeah.
Right south of Sinola?
Right. The one there with the big boat. No, come, come south, come south.
South of that one, Mr.?
Right south. He's just gotten a permit to make an eight-slip marina there. And my observation, I walk by there every day. I go to work at the museum. My observation is that people, regardless of what the stripes say, people are parking parallel there. It's, I don't know whether they're using, they're going out on the boats or what they're doing, but they, they tend to park parallel there, just along in there. But I, I'm not, I thought your idea of between B Street and C Street is a really good one. I think that one is really important. But I just observed, I keep seeing, why are they parking parallel when the streets obviously mark differently? So I just, and I don't know what the footprint, I haven't seen the plans for his marina. So I don't know if he's trying to incorporate, if it's got more building on it than that. You haven't seen it?
No, we don't. I think he has the original building.
Okay, so it's just that. But that, that building would be, I mean, it was, historically, it would be a really nice thing to have there. But I know it's, it's, but a marina, it sort surprised me that they were gonna put eight, get eight slips in there.
Well, probably what is going on, I think, and Commissioner Melander has a comment on that as well, but it might be contractors just pulling up in there, or, you know, just quick, easy. I mean, it's easier to do that if they've got a trailer with them instead of back out. Do you, what do you think is going on?
I've noticed it, and, and the captain for that boat is my neighbor. And he and his crew pull in there and park that way because they drive long trucks. They drive a four-door truck like are all over the place. And they know that their back end's sticking way out in the road beyond those stripes. So they just park parallel.
So I guess my, my point was, if it's being used and that those things are happening anyway, maybe there's a point to going parallel all the way down to the condos. But I mean, I don't, I'm not recommending losing too many.
Isn't it already parallel across the street?
Yeah.
It is.
Just like it is in front of Harriet's.
And there's plenty of diagonal parking that's long enough for them, right there at the corner of Southeast Avenue C. So if, you know, if it got, eventually if it got full where it's full of vehicles, they, they've got parking. And the captain of a ship of a big boat like that should have the capability of walking an additional ten feet.
We can, we can do both ways. We can, we can do an exhibit both ways.
Okay. All right, yeah. We'll do that then. And we'll take a look at it. We'll put it as another agenda item as old business next month. And the word will spread and we'll give the public input. Okay, so we'll have that as an agenda item next month as well.
And we get two for the price of one.
Yes.
Okay. All right, Mr. Mathis is counting parking spaces now. All right. Okay, ten parallel, right there.
There's ten.
Gonna get a ten on the other side. So item five has been removed from the agenda. And then we'll move on to item six, discussion of possible action regarding funding one-half cost of second city webcam and installation. This is proposed to be funded fifty-fifty by the Tourist Development Council and the city. It's something that I had negotiated with the TDC years ago. We can have up to four webcams. The money is still there for us. We've got one at Sea Quarters right now. The new location would be at the Carabelle Boat Club overlooking the bayou towards the moorings. The CBC, the Carabelle Boat Club manager, Mr. Barber, has approved of the idea. He's excited about it. And his board of directors of the Carabelle Boat Club approved the idea within an hour. They're very excited about it. And that was a couple of three weeks ago. I met there this morning with Mr. Powis and, and Kayden to, Kayden Barber, the manager there, to look at a location and, and approve that location through Kayden. We reviewed the logistics and the internet capabilities, which they have great internet there. The booster won't be required like at Sea Quarters. But Mr. Powis, as he did with Sea Quarters, as a volunteer, he will purchase the equipment and install on a volunteer basis as he did at Sea Quarters. And then he'll submit for reimbursement from the city, and the city will submit to the TDC for fifty percent reimbursement. Mr. Powis, this morning, he already provided a quote, which was circulated to you all. And he told me this morning for you, for us to just go ahead right now, and for now, consider this higher quote that he has up top there, five hundred and fifty-one dollars, which would be split with the city and the TDC. And the video this time would be, because city funded, would be posted on the city's website, the TDC website. And Mr. Powis has negotiated with Visit Florida to get it on, on a Visit Florida site. The current one that we have at Sea Quarters was funded by the CRA. It's in the CRA district. And that is on the CRA website, TDC, and Visit Florida. So do we want to spend about two hundred and thirty dollars to give this second webcam? The, it's, it's really good for advertisement. I can't tell you how good something like this is. People use it to, to look at the weather, second homeowners, boat owners that are away, that are using the marinas. People from Sea Quarters from far away watch the boat parade and the fireworks. And this is just a good thing to, to have for public information.
We still have the one on the coast guard dock?
No, no, we don't. We, you need internet for that, and there's no internet available there. So the Carabelle Boat Club's contribution is the free internet access and a little bit of power that it will take. Yes, or Mr.?
What would the image be?
The image is gonna be from up top. Have you been up top over there?
Yes.
It's gonna be way up high. They're gonna put it as high as the genie lift will lift them, almost. And then it's the under an eave, and it's gonna look to the east across the bayou there, and the marshes and the vistas, and towards the moorings. It's, it's beautiful. It really is beautiful view.
I've seen plenty of things that would think that. That same front, that and all the docks over there.
And looking to the south is pretty there as well. All right. So do we want to consider this?
Yes.
All right. Who's gonna motion for it?
I'm looking back.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll say.
Okay. So we have motion back to Commissioner Wal, uh, Allen. Second back to Commissioner Walden. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. All right. We'll let Mr. Powis know in the morning, and he'll get going. Thank you all very much. All right. We're moving to old business now. Item one, discussion of possible action regarding the Streets and Roads Department items. And number, letter A, would be the lay-down yard, security and equipment storage. And last month, Commissioner Walden motioned to give Corky the authority to work with Dustin, the Streets and Roads Superintendent, Supervisor, to get a seven-foot fence with Constantine wire, secure some storage containers, some additional lighting through Duke Energy, and eventually security cameras. And we're gonna ask Ms. Courtney to support and report on the progress there.
We have two twenty-foot storage containers being delivered tomorrow. I did reach out to Dustin today, so that is scheduled for delivery. Duke Energy has also been out there. There's one pole that's already existing out there. It won't cost us much money at all to, to put a light on that pole or a receptacle so we can plug the camera in. We're also gonna get a price on putting another light over towards the storage containers. Once they put the first light in, we can see how well it shines. And if we need the other light, they did say it would be very expensive to put the other light in. So I suggest we go ahead and do the first light and see how good it works. If we need a second light or not, they are gonna give us a price on that. Does that raise up, do we still need the fence? We haven't got any fence prices on fencing. We did get these containers with special locks. They can't get in to cut, to cut the locks. I think we still need some fencing on the outside of the perimeter. But I'm not sure that we need the Constantine wire and, you know, once we get lighting and cameras. And we've already got the containers that are pretty, pretty secure. I don't know that we need to hire someone to do this. Another option that we have is we can buy the fencing and put it up ourselves. I mean, we're looking at quite a bit of money for this.
Okay. So where is, where are the containers going to be located?
Thank you. I'm Dustin Putnam, Supervisor of the Street and Road Department. The Conex box is gonna be located almost center of our, y'all are laid out there.
Side by side?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so that's correct. Has, have y'all considered fencing around just in the location that we have discussed? And, and what is thought about that, just fencing in the?
I don't think it would be necessary, to be honest. If we have those Conex boxes and, and the, the security thing, the security box for the lock and the special locks that come with it, I don't think we would have to fence in around the Conex boxes themselves. Now, I do recommend, since Mr. Mop has cleared the backside of that property, maybe, you know, by the fencing, and we put it up on the backside just for, you know, extra security. But I, I don't think it's necessary to have the fence in the Conex boxes themselves.
Can your trailer sit inside those storage containers?
No, no.
Okay. What do you think about solar lights around those? Are they gonna be near that shed that you built out of Mr., out of some salvage from the Melander Seafood Dock, Marine Street?
It'll be west of the pole line there. I've actually done some declutter, and then probably anywhere about there in a couple of weeks.
I haven't been out.
We moved some sheds around, preparing for the Conex boxes, kind of space it out. That way you can see a little bit better when you're, you know, cleaning it up. It's gonna be just west of, you, you remember that old Illuminal building?
Mm-hmm.
It'll be just west of there.
So have you all considered, and I'm directing my question to Dustin, have you all considered solar lights?
Yes, ma'am, that's, we have motioned, motioned solar lights, for sure.
And what do you think about that?
We would definitely be interested in, in, you know, save money.
Yes.
So we would definitely be able to do that.
But on the, on the shine.
Yeah, on the beam, it's shining on the Conex boxes. That's be something we could do.
There's no other pole out there on that, on that side?
Not with power to it.
Currently, okay. They would have to put a pole in.
I'll come by next week when you get your boxes set in, okay?
Should look for.
All right. And I think maybe we should consider some solar lights, some, you know, good solar lights, not, not inexpensive, but some, some good ones that will be activated with the motion.
I agree.
How, what do y'all think about that?
Good.
Dancing, I don't know what to say. That's up to you guys.
Well, I kind of agree with Dustin. I think that we could look at prices of fencing. And I agree with the concept of if we decide to do that, buy material and let the inmates install the fence. That's pretty common practice among other inmate crews around our area. And we have more to protect than what's just gonna be in the Conex boxes. So I kind of agree with Dustin. You just got a lot more equipment out there than what just is gonna be in the Conex box. So I, I agree with fencing for security.
How high?
I don't think we need to do, as city administrators said, I don't think their discussions, I don't think we necessarily need a seven-foot fence with barbed wire across the top of it. But we need something to reinforce that that's the city yard and that's city equipment there. If it's just a standard six-foot fence.
Something like that. Just something that, you know, makes it a little harder. But with those Conex boxes, most of the annual, the annual crews that's been stolen in the past will be in the Conex box.
But you, as you had said, you still got your vehicles sitting there that they can come in. Where in the past you've had fuel stolen out of those and different vandalism done to them. All those are still gonna be sitting outside.
What about your lawn mowers?
They, they should fit in the Conex boxes. I've never tried, but the width and the height, it should fit.
Okay. All right. Well, I guess continue moving forward. Do y'all have, do you think there's a motion in order here? I don't. I think we made the motion.
I think that's Courtney Keating.
Uh-huh. I think we made the motion last month, and just keep moving forward. Appreciate the work you all have done so far. And I hope that your lawn mower's fit in that box.
Yeah, it did with a.
Okay. I'm gonna be upset if they don't fit in the box. All right. All right. All right. We thank you.
Thank you.
So item B then, we're gonna be talking about scheduled shift work hours and number of work days per week for the Streets and Roads Department. And I'm gonna say that previous to this meeting, the administrator has made a scheduling decision, and staff has been advised. And I had the choice whether or not to remove this item, because the decision has been, this is an administrative decision, actually, and should have been, had administrated which, which it was. But I'm allowing it to be on the agenda for discussion, to hear comments, and to allow an opportunity for suggestions from us, from the public, from the staff. This is the only time we can, can really discuss it together. Personally, I don't believe actions required in this item, but we'll, we'll have some discussion and we'll see where, where we go. So do we have, do we have any, do you, you have, have suggested then, Ms. Courtney, as administrator?
I go back to eight hours a day, five days a week.
And you did that as a result of reviewing log sheets from the DOC for the past?
The past month.
Okay. I hope that all the commissioners had the opportunity to review those log sheets. And then there was an email confirming procedures, check-in and checkout procedures there. I hope that you all had an opportunity to review that.
I have them. I'd say, I have it. There's a few that have it, Sam.
Okay.
You want them to have, so you can bring them today.
Ms. Courtney, is the?
We were not circulating the log sheets. We were asked at the prison not to put them out to the public. So I do have them. If you want to review them, you can look at them and give them back to you.
I will say that Ms. Courtney is the administrator. We, you know, ask her, that's part of her duties, to do these administrative assignments. I don't know, you know, I don't think that we should really be undercutting or usurping her decision at this point. I, you know, I don't see the necessity. her decision at this point, you know, I don't see the necessity of it. I'm in support of it.
Are there any in that field that not have to work that way, that we did four days and 10 hours, or whatever?
For the Streets and Roads, there's only the two in the department. This would be for both of them.
And Mr. Dustin, I understand you would like to have a comment?
Yeah, I just, I just, it's really a request. I would, you know, I kind of wanna stay with my full 10, so, been like that for 15 years. Not much has changed. My, the things that we got from the DOT, DOC out there, we turn our inmates in the same time as the county, and they work four tens. The outside grounds, present officers, they work four tens. And I just, you know, just kinda wanted to keep it the same. It is, you know, you get where you're used to something, kinda gets embedded, and there'll be change in the midst of all this. We're dealing with so much with this stuff, we're trying to get ready, you know, as far as that concern death and all that, so, yeah, it's just a lot to take in all at one time, so.
The county, somehow they manage, even if they're working four tens, they're checking people out five days a week. How do they do that?
The, that's, me and Ms. Melander had talked about that. I have no, I know the solid waste and the parking rate is five days a week.
And I know the bus barn goes five days a week as well.
The bus barn, they don't have inmates in, they don't pull them, they squat out.
They got inmates, they make inmates like October the 31st, or somewhere around in there, do they have that? They were getting inmates through October.
They weren't getting in October the 31st.
Okay, they got inmates through October. So. Now, and I have, I have made a suggestion to you, I know you, my concern is that you, as the supervisor, would be occupied with inmates all of your work hours, all of your worried work hours.
Yes, ma'am.
Of course, you don't pick them up till just before eight, somewhere around there, and you check in at seven. It, how are you gonna do your supervisory duties if that's inventory, or some repairs, ordering, whatever it is? And you can return those inmates at any time during the day.
Yes, ma'am.
You can drive out to the gate, and something happened, and you can turn right around and bring it back. You're not obligated.
Anytime.
Okay. You could return the inmates at noon on Wednesdays, so you can take care of your supervisory duties. The both of you could return inmates at noon on Wednesdays, and one of you could run the knuckle truck, and the other one could do the supervisory duties. I mean, there's all different scenarios, you know, where you could run a knuckle truck every two weeks and be on a schedule doing that, so folks would know when to expect to put their debris out that they're not supposed to put out. Because that's what we'll be picking up with a knuckle truck, right?
It's supposed to be.
Yeah, picking up like sofas and stuff that they're not supposed to do. Well, anyway.
What's this, play that on the street, law don't catch or miss eyes?
I know it, and it belongs to us, and the landfill is charging us for that, so.
I guess I was really just questioning, you know.
Well?
Just looking for some answers.
I think Courtney and I have talked about better utilization of the work hours and productivity, that kind of thing. And it's been brought to my attention many times over the years. I think Commissioner Walden has mentioned it last month, that it's been brought to his attention, and he actually requested it to be on the agenda, so.
All right, well.
Do the commissioners have any comments?
I just make the comment for Dustin, behalf, or I say for the question, behalf for the entire situation. I do understand their desire to work the 10-hour days. Some of my crews used to work 10-hour days. I do understand that, but I've also been in discussions with city administrator now for a couple of weeks or longer, well, actually, longer than that, actually, for a year or two, about different scenarios and situations, so. But I do try to consider both sides of it. Well, I appreciate including the employees, but anyway, and on behalf of what's been said, and what the city administrator recommending, I would support her decision.
I've been through that, too, and I feel like that there may be some jobs that would be better to pull a ten, so there should be room for adjustment under certain circumstances. That'd be my feeling.
Okay, and any, any comment? Well, so, does anyone feel a motion is in order?
We just made the decision, I'll go back.
And we'll?
One more, Mr. Vaughn? Go, go.
Well, Ms. Courtney's made her decision. Mr. Commissioner Melander?
Yeah. I don't know how to respond to it, other than I think that what we, our job up here, my job, I feel like is to work with that city administrator. But I feel like there's a lot of her decisions that's being made, that she brings, just as she is for this, and made a recommendation. We discuss it with her, and then, from my experience thus far, being on the board, when she's made recommendations, we usually support it, and we'll be very above or down. That's what it's been.
At this point, I don't know if she, I had to ask myself this afternoon, she made a decision. I think she's not making them recommendations. She went ahead and made an administrative decision, and the staff's been advised.
Well, that's your opinion, I just gave mine.
Okay. So that, you know, I try to think about it and figure out what's happened here, and...
Well, I just look at what we've done in the past, since I've been here.
But if you feel a motion is in order, you're welcome to make a motion.
Well, you're directing as mayor, that we shouldn't say.
Well, I mean, I can't, I can't stop you from, I cannot stop you from making a motion.
That's true.
No, I can't do that.
That's true.
So, the administrator's decision stands.
So, when is start?
Simple as that.
When will start? Monday?
Or do, I would think that maybe we should give them a week or two to make adjustments. They may have, have adjustments.
If they have, if they need time, if they need, if you have some plans, already, you know, that's, that's.
I could say this, where I work, when they change any shift or any days off, you have to give them two weeks. I mean, I'm just taking that from where I work.
We can start the first of December, or I got to the second.
That's fine with me.
Okay, and I would recommend that, to give them an opportunity to make scheduling adjustments if we don't know what's going on at home, or, you know.
We'll say that first week, when did you say?
Do you say the second Monday? We thank you for coming out this late at night.
Thank you, Dustin.
We thank you for your service, Mr. Dustin, and, and Mr. Massey as well. All right. Number, item two, discussion of possible action regarding the police lieutenant job description. And Courtney sent this out to the, to all of us a couple of weeks ago, and has everyone had the opportunity to review the lieutenant, Police Department Lieutenant job description?
Yes.
All right.
I have.
I have two. Has, do we want to consider this, or does anyone have comments or revisions, suggested revisions? I hope that that would have been done already, we've had such a long time to review it. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion?
To accept the job description? All right. That motion is by Commissioner Mathis, second by Commissioner Allen. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, then that motion carries. All right, we got now, we have a public hearing. Three items on that, and Mr. Martin, do you want to read these items?
I will.
Okay, resolution 14-2019.
Resolution 14-2019 is a resolution authorizing the mayor to negotiate and execute a public transportation grant agreement, FDOT project number 407438-4-94-01. The Florida Department of Transportation provided 85.45% grant funding for purchase and installation of fuel master system, fuel pickup monitor assembly, and will include site CEI. Whereas the city of Carabelle needs 85.45% grant funding to upgrade the Carabelle Airport invasion fuel system. Whereas the Carabelle City Commission wishes to take advantage of the generous offer of the Florida Department of Transportation, provide 85.45% of the funding for this needed project for the Carabelle Thompson Airport. Now therefore be resolved by the city commission, the city of Carabelle, Florida, assembled grant meeting on November 7, 2019. Mayor B, and she is hereby authorized to directly negotiate and execute joint participation agreement for Florida Department of Transportation document necessary to receive funding from the Florida Department of Transportation as follows. Florida Department of Transportation participation 85.45%, and $28,200, city of Carabelle participation 14.55% at $4,800. Total project cost $33,000. Be it therefore, be it further resolved at a copy of this resolution, the attached public transportation grant agreement between the city of Carabelle and Florida Department of Transportation will be executed, and filed by the Carabelle City Commission on September 7, November 2019.
All right, I have a question right off. I heard in there, I don't have the full resolution with me, you referred to joint participation agreement, and I'm gonna ask Mr. Sullivan, should that be changed to, they've changed it to a new name, public transportation grant agreement?
Right, that's what was on the resolution.
Okay, and the title?
They changed that back in the first of the year, the fiscal year.
All right, so just in the body of it, where it refers to the JPA, we want to change that to public transportation grant agreement. They've changed the name of their document, their agreements, and...
I can make that.
Okay, all right. And so, if we motioned to approve this resolution 1429, so that would be contingent on that, that clerical change? Do we have a motion, or do we want to accept this funding from the DOT for $28,000, and the Carabelle Airports portion is $4,800?
Motion to approve.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Melander to approve, the second by Commissioner Mathis. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? And then that motion carries. Okay, then ordinance 475. We have a resolution 15. Oh, you want to do the resolution first, 15, 19? Okay, so we'll do that first.
All right, this is resolution 15-2019. It's a resolution of the city commission, the city of Carabelle, for purpose of application for state revolving loan, state revolving loan funding for the Lighthouse Estate drinking water improvement, improvements project phase 12, providing for a pledge of the net revenue to provide the city water service system to secure payment of all amounts due in owing, under the terms of the state loan agreement, authorizing of the city administrator to execute any and all, any and all applications or other loan documents on behalf of the city in connection with this loan, applying for an effective date. Whereas the city of Carabelle is empowered to borrow money, contract loans, as from time to time, to finance the undertaking of any capital project with purposes permitted by the state constitution, and make budget funds, credit for property of municipality for the payment of such debts pursuant to section 166.111, court statutes. And whereas the city of Carabelle desires to submit an application for Department of Fire and Water Protection State revolving loan program, for the purpose of funding the Lighthouse Estate drinking water improvements project phase 1 and 2. Now therefore be it resolved by the city commission, the city of Carabelle, Florida, that, one, that the city of Carabelle hereby pledges to combine revenue with water service utility system to repayment of the loan in connection with project 190420. And that the city of Carabelle, by authorization designated, Courtney Dempsey, city administrator, is a person authorized to file a loan application, provide associated assurances, execute the loan agreement, and present the city, and represent the city in carrying out responsibilities, including that of requesting loan disbursements under the loan agreement. And number three, this resolution take effect upon its adoption by the city commission, city of Carabelle, mayor.
Okay, and this is required with the loan, this resolution is required to be submitted with the loan application?
What was the number on that?
It was resolution 15-2019.
I didn't have it in my phone.
It was added to the agenda, shortened it, it's here.
Mine didn't get back there.
So, we did it in the meeting?
In the beginning, we did.
No, we had to do it until like about four o'clock today.
Oh, okay.
So, do we have a motion to approve this resolution? Must be.
Take a motion to approve.
Okay, that's, back Commissioner Mathis, do we have a second?
I'll say.
Okay, second by Commissioner Walden. Any further discussion? All in favor?
None.
Any opposed? Okay, and then that motion carries. Okay, so now we'll have ordinance 475, this is first reading, no action detected.
All right, first reading of order number 475, an ordinance amending the comprehensive plan in the city of Carabelle specifically to update and provide the future land use element, public facilities element, capital improvements element, coastal management element, intergovernmental coordination element, conservation element, and future land use plans, providing for sustainability, repealing all ordinances in conflict here within, providing for effective date. This is the adoption of the, what they call the ORF, the board recommendations from Department of Transportation.
All right, and this is a comprehensive plan. We worked on this earlier with Richard Fetcheck earlier in the year, and this is the update that we really should have submitted back in 2014, I believe, that it slipped through cracks. So, we're not gonna vote on this, but we will have it on the December agenda, we'll vote. All right, being no more business, I'm going to call for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn by Commissioner Melander, second by Commissioner Walden. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, and that motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen, ladies.